We call our January meeting in order, and on the first item on our agenda is a public hearing. So, and the public hearing is on ordinance twenty-one zero one. Formerly the ordinance twenty seventeen and ordinance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinances, section ninety-four oh three, frontal dune policy and regulations.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Anything else to think of?
This is, this is for the public.
Public hearing, yeah. Um, this is actually the set of public hearings for the, this is the public hearing, isn't it?
Yes.
It's the public hearing.
So if there's any questions on this ordinance, this is an ordinance to amend our frontal dune policy so that we may bring ourselves further in, better in line with what Camma's doing when it comes to the frontal dune policy. It should, it has several benefits, this ordinance does. One is it's, it, it, it kind of does away with some of the confusion about what you can do in front and behind the frontal dune, and our frontal dune is different than Camma's frontal dune. The town has its own frontal dune designation. And so what happens is in some of the areas where we actually have more beach area or large, large spaces between the, the homes and the beach where there's a large buffer there, a lot of times the, our frontal dune designation is different than Camma's. And so what will happen is, is that you could actually have a frontal dune that Camma designates way out at the, at the beach. If our dune designation wasn't different, then you would be able to have a home based off of our ordinance, off of the road, a normal distance, but you could then have some sort of a structure between there and the toe of the frontal dune, Camma's frontal dune, on the landward side. Uh, when our, our ordinance, because it's much more structured, has, has historically kept all of our structures forward and landward of our designated frontal dune, which in turn limits their ability to have some accessory structures like pools. And because of that, they're putting them in the front yard, they're putting them under houses, um, or they're not putting them in at all if they, if they can't have one. Um, it's, it's messing with the structures, how they're built, um, and so there's several things going on there. So what we propose to do is to simply say that if, whenever our frontal dune is different than Camma's, and Camma's is further out, then you can go fifty feet on the other side of our seaward dune, toe of our seaward dune, and no more than fifty feet, and you can have a pool. So what we're saying, we're limiting it from that toe, the toe seaward of our frontal dune, and so you can have a pool. That's not a violation of state law, it, it, and it'll allow them to have that pool. And what it'll do is it'll get them out of the front yard and get them out from the, under the houses. It'll also allow them, some of them may end up being a little bit bigger, but my, my impression of pools are the closer you have them to the homes, if you've got them under the homes or in the backyard, it's very hard to handle what's called attractive nuisances and build fences around them properly that can be properly, and anybody's building a pool knows that. We end up with door alarms on the doors, the windows, we end up with bonding of fences. It, there are some cases where this would be a big help, and, and, uh, in a lot of ways, just a lot of ways. So, uh, if there's anyone that has any questions about this proposed ordinance change, let me answer them, okay?
So I had a gentleman that called me and, and he has a pool, he's on the oceanfront and he has a pool under his house.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so he, he wanted to know, well, if I can take this pool out from under my house and put it, you know, put it out on the beach, and then can I build my deck bigger on the house? I mean, this was just his question.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, you know, I'm really not sure, but I don't think so.
Well, here's what, here's what he, he could do. If, if, if our frontal dune is the same as theirs, okay, then he won't be able to do that. If their frontal dune is the same as ours, he's not going to be able to move that pool, it's got to stay right where it's at. If their frontal dune is further out, let's say it's two hundred feet out there, then he'll be able to go fifty feet out and fifty feet wide, basically, you, you follow what I'm saying?
Right.
Or to his, uh, not fifty feet, but go to his property lines on the setbacks on the side.
Right.
So it'd be fifty in his property line setbacks. Can't use concrete, you'll have to use wood decking because it's pervious.
Right.
We're no longer allowing pervious material anymore because people aren't maintaining it and it's filling up. So he, he'd be limited to wood decking, it'll have to be a ground structure, all pools, all pools in a coastal high hazard area have to be in the ground or have to be lifted above the designed flood elevation. So it's easy, it's gonna be way up in the air, which ain't gonna happen, or it's gotta be in the ground. So that's the answer to that question. Is it maximum to be able to go beyond the toe of that frontal dune, it's fifty feet, that's what this ordinance says, but as he always could do, he can go to within five feet of his property lines on the side yard setbacks. Depending, if he's got, if he's building one of them bigger houses under our new big house rule, he's gonna be coming into seven and maybe even fifteen feet, so.
Now, like on the deck and around that pool, it's, it's gonna be ground level decking, okay, and it'll have to be wood.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But is there a limit as far as on the sides and everything, how big you can build that deck?
He'll be able to build, like I said, it would be just like if it was on this side or just like his house, he, he can't go more than fifty feet towards the, towards the ocean, but he can go all the way to his five foot setbacks on the, on the sides. He could do that anyway.
Yeah.
If it was behind his house, he could go all the way to the toe of the dune and to the five foot setbacks on both sides. He's not limited.
Okay, yeah. All right.
Okay. Tim, I have a question. Do, do you have any concern that by placing pools between the two dunes, that in some way that will weaken the dune structure and, and not prevent or help preserve the beach?
What happens is, is that, is that whenever you put a pool out in the dune, whether it's behind the house or beyond the dune, depending on where it's at in the dune system, uh, we require in those cases, depending on where it's at, a letter from an engineer stating that that pool will not be a hazard to properties on each side, and it won't do detriment to the existing dune system. That's required, that's actually in our new A F I P ordinance, and it's also in one of the, in our, might be in our regular ordinance, but that is a requirement for putting in pools. It's also in the building code.
So Tim and Mike's example, and I was gonna ask the same question, would they have to build a walkway over that first dune?
Well, you, you would have a walk, you're allowed to have a walkway over that dune anyway down to the toe of it.
Okay.
And you can get, have a walkway all the way out to the Camma dune. That, the walkways can go as far as again.
They would have to have, they would have to have a walkway, they couldn't bulldoze part of them.
No, 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 you cannot do that, you can't bulldoze any, they're, they're not going to be, if there's a, if they've got a big hill and then they got another big hill, they, they can't, they can't destroy that dune. If they've got a hill and then a valley or a flat area or something that we can designate as not being a substantial dune, then they'll be able to follow this ordinance and do something.
Okay.
Because there's not an engineer in the world that can't say that that's not gonna somehow damage it. The other thing is, is that there's a positive to this, is that that sand that is removed out there can be used to shore up, for the, for the pool can be moved, used to shore up the other dune that's already out there, as long as they don't move it off of site.
Yeah, but that's saying it can't be taken off site.
No, 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 you can't, you know, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of sand that's leaving here and going to other places when pools are being put in, that, that, because it can't be used in other places and you can't pile it up on a, on a flat lot anywhere. But in the particular case, when it comes to them dunes out there, now this is only gonna be relevant probably from, I want to say somewhere around the eight hundred block where it could be possibly relevant all the way to the west end. There's not gonna be any other place where this is gonna apply, because we don't have, there's not, there's nowhere else where we got a, a dune system that's strong that would be able to support something like that.
Any more questions?
Did we have any couple of comments come in?
No, there were no comments.
Do I have a motion to come out of our public hearing?
I'm moved.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, everybody's moved. All right, we're now ready to enter our meeting. So let's take just a few minutes to, uh... We're done?
Okay.
Okay. We'll have just a few minutes of silence and invocation just to go over, and I would especially like to say we'd like to balance in our thoughts and everything, because he's having a, he's having, having a time with the COVID and, and, uh, so let's just have a few minutes, moments of reflection. We call the order, and our, welcome everybody to our meeting this afternoon. It bodes well with each and everyone, and what we want to do, we would really like to start out by having our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item is agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all put, you got it, you got it, Heather?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Now, item number five, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other ones? Item number six, public comments on agenda?
We have no comments today.
No comments, okay. Item number seven, UNCW presentation, Assistant Town Manager Ferguson.
Yes, sir. At the December twentieth, twenty eighteen meeting of the Inlet Beach Protection Board, member Thomas told the board that he and former Commissioner Freer had visited UNCW specifically with Dr. Joanie Backstrom after meeting him at the North Carolina Beach Inlet Waterway Association Conference. Um, after that time, Dr. Backstrom and Dr. Shiftlet came and presented to the IBPB some options for studies that UNCW may be able to help the town with. As part of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget process, the town approved two studies. The first was to establish a baseline of dune vegetation types and coverage, and the second involved following the historical evolution of the Lockwood Folly and Shallow Inlets. And based on, uh, those studies, there has been two no-cost extensions that the town has granted UNCW because of COVID, and at this time, both of the professors are here to present their finals results for the study. I think Dr. Shiftlet's gonna go first, and if you just want to go up to that podium.
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Dr. Shiftlet, I teach coastal classes at UNCW, and I'm an ecologist, a plant ecologist by training. So what I've been doing for really the past year and mostly over the summer is looking at the vegetation at Holden Beach. As Christie was saying, the town contacted us to establish this baseline study, and really wanting to know more about cover types in general, what was going on with sea oaks, because there's been planting of sea oaks and planting of bitter panicum. And I know the town also planted some American beech grass, but I personally did not observe that, and there could be a few things going on with that. One is when I ran into coastal transplants in the field, they told me that it had really been concentrated more towards the west area and not so much throughout. I don't have the date on that, so I don't know. Another thought I had is that American beech grass, it's really at the southern extent of its range down here, so it's very possible that shortly after it's planted, it's really great for initially establishing cover, but then it gets outcompeted by sea oaks. So that's another possibility as to why I didn't see much of it. Um, and so in these pictures, you can just see the planting efforts, you'll notice that you can see the sea oaks in the foreground here, um, where you have some of the smaller seedlings, and then bitter panicum is in there as well, it's a darker colored grass, kind of looks like a greenish bluish to me. So in the summer, graduate students assisted us with field collection efforts, and then we also did some drone surveys, so I'll tell you about that too. Just a little bit of background on sea oaks, I know you're all very familiar with it, but this is kind of relevant to some of the pieces here. It's the prevailing native dune grass that gets planted for dune stabilization in the southeastern U.S. It's a warm season grass, so that's why it does really well here, because it's warmer. Whereas that American beech grass, it's actually a cooler grass, it does really well north of Hatteras, and then like I said, south of Hatteras, it just doesn't compete, but it's really great for quickly establishing cover. Sea oaks, on the other hand, it's slow growing, it's longer lived, it's perennial, so it's gonna come back year after year, and it also has an extensive root system. It grows by rhizome, so it puts in those underground roots, and it's really great at trapping sand and clonal growth, so, you know, once it establishes, it can grow clonally and expand. It does reproduce by seed, but as you might know, a lot of those seeds aren't very viable, and, um, the seed production is generally pretty low. Another thing to know about it is that burial stimulates the growth, so to a certain degree, the base of the plant gets buried, and actually stimulates the rhizome to keep growing. So the way that we did this study was, we broke the island out into, um, five sections based on the twenty nineteen annual beach monitor report. I looked at one of the figures in that and saw that there was, um, basically the east reach, which moving from east to west. I added on an inlet section, so I kind of split the east reach in the two just so that I could break out the inlet area. And then we had town east reach, the pier, which is really like the midpoint of the island, town west reach, and west area. And so in each of these three zones, or sorry, these six zones, the way that I did this was I set up transects of vegetation, and I'll go over those methods in a second. What you'll notice on here too is that the inlet and the west area, those are really the endpoints of this study, and so those are areas where you're not doing any planting, but all the ones in between and the interior, that's where active planting is happening. So our methods, in each of our transects, thank you, um, we did three per zone, and each of those were perpendicular to the shoreline. We basically used a one by one meter plot, so you can see that in the top, it's just this small square, and so starting at the toe of the dune or the fencing, we started at the line of fencing, depending on where we were on the island, we had a transect at zero meters, at two, at four, at five, and then every five meters thereafter, until we ran into someone's yard, you know, we didn't sample in yards, until we ran into the road, or a maximum of forty-five meters, because that captured the majority of the dune system. And so in each of these transects, we identified all the species that were there, we looked at percent cover of each of those species, and then we counted as many stems as we could. And we really just, you know, for the sea oaks, it is clonal, so I don't know how many individuals there were, but we looked at, you know, clumps of the grass independently. We also took out a device called an RTK, which is a real-time kinematic, and it measures elevation, and so we have elevation of all of our plots as well, so that we could look at, um, dune profiles. And then we did some drone data collection. So another professor, Dr. Rotenberg, we contracted him to fly a drone over the island. Um, this was done in July of this year, so July thirtieth and thirty-first, and we did a subset of those transects, we didn't do all eighteen that we selected, but we did several. And then I also looked at some satellite imagery. So what did this look like? I know it's a little hard to see all of this here, so I just want to point out, these were each of my zones, and these are the transects that I have, so there are just some small kind of dots on here, you can just see the inlet, they're close together, but in the rest of the zones, I tried to space the transects out so that spatially they would be different from one another. And some other things to kind of keep in mind about this study is, in the middle of the island, so from the town, um, I guess from the east end to the town west reach, you'll notice that the dunes are much narrower in general, so forty-five meters really captures it. The black bar is what I sampled, and then the gray bar is the actual dune width, based on looking at imagery. And at the inlet and the west area, those dune fields actually extend much wider, so they're much wider, more developed dunes. And so I won't go into too many figures here, there's just a couple, and then I want to show you a lot of the images of what we captured, but bear with me here, because, you know, this is really important to get a good sense of what happened. And what you'll see on these figures is we're moving from the inlet to the, um, west area, so we're going east to west. On the top, these are the dune profiles, so these are the averages of my three transects. And immediately you'll notice that the west area has a longer dune, as I just showed you, it goes to four, you know, beyond forty-five meters. The east end is a really shallow dune system, right? It's cutting off by about twenty-five or thirty meters from where that fence was to essentially a road. And I'll show you as well, it's also very spart. The town, um, east reach, you'll see there's a little bit of a dune ridge developing in the front, um, so it's doing well, then you've got another dune behind that. And then our figures below, what we've got in the middle here is sea oats cover, which is shown in the black bar, and then bitter panicum, and I pulled those out because they were the ones that were of interest to the town. And you'll notice that in the town, um, east reach, or sorry, east end, that it's not occurring across much of the dune, right? You're only seeing it in about like five meters, ten meters, fifteen meters. Whereas in the west area, you get sea oaks across that whole profile, essentially, and in the town east reach, we're getting more of it throughout, from about, you know, two meters beyond fifteen or twenty. On the bottom, you're just seeing total cover of all plants, and the black bar is all you need to pay attention to, that's living cover. And so you'll notice, you've got more than just sea oaks on those dunes, right? It's not just sea oaks that's making up all of the cover. So now the next half of the island, now we're moving from the pier to the town west reach to the west area. Again, at our endpoint, you'll notice the west area is a much wider system, and you get a really well-developed frontal dune, um, that shallow area like this gentleman was just talking about, and then another dune behind that. And again, with sea oaks, you'll see that it occurs across the entire range. Um, but you're seeing a lot more sea oats development at the pier and the town west reach than we were seeing, um, at the east end, right? And so some other things to notice here, again, like the pier, it's a short dune system, right, so you're going to that fence to pretty much the dune before the parking lot is about thirty meters, twenty-five meters. Okay, so now let's look at some of the drone imagery that we capture and what we're seeing. This is just to show you generally what the inlet area looks like, it's naturally vegetated, there's no planting going on, um, so we can just kind of look at that. In the right, we have a mosaic that we captured from the drone, showing you that it is an extensive dune field behind the, um, sea oaks and other species, you actually get a swale, right, saw some wetland plants, and then behind that are shrubs, but none of my sampling went into the shrubs. Now, um, that's just to show you generally where this picture in the top left is, I think it's that area. So this is the east end, and you can see in this area, this is where our active planting starts, the town's doing. And what you'll notice is there's a lot of area between where the active planting is occurring and the fencing, so there's certainly a lot of potential to continue that planting and develop out that dune. And this is also an area where, like I said, I noticed it was the shortest dune area, you're getting the most compressed range of sea oaks, and there's a lot of disturbance, if you will, I saw a lot of dune scarfing, so I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. This is the town east reach, so it looks, you know, a lot more, I guess healthier, just more fleshed out than the east area did, and we can see, you know, quite good development of the planting. There are some bare spots though, so you can see that here, you know, pretty much behind some of these planting, there's sparse areas, and that's where I would really recommend that you focus your attention in the future is looking at some of the bare spots, because the areas where you've already planted, the sea oats is gonna keep growing out clonally and filling in. This is the town west reach, um, so it actually looks pretty similar to the town east reach. And then another thing about the town west reach is that, I liked this image where you can see multiple stages of dune grass growth and fill-in. So you've got the sparse area where it's probably just recently been planted, intermediate is where you're gonna have some of that growth probably from the previous year, and then dense, um, this is where it's really starting to fill in over time. And then we've got the west area. So the west area is a naturally vegetated area, it's wider, as I showed you before, it's a more stable portion of the island relative to those interior sites, and so you can just kind of see that it's a longer dune field. And as we move across the island, right, like it's much narrower here, and then as you get out here, you can start to see where it widens up. Just go back for one second, I think I skipped the pier. No, maybe I hit the slide. Okay, so I just want to show you a few more figures, um, one of the things that I also did was, you know, look at all the species on these dunes, and so there were thirty-six total species across all the dunes. There were about nine that occurred regardless of zone, so you had nine species pretty much throughout the island, and then there were some species that were unique to the, um, each of the zones, and I made a table for the town so they can see that in the report, which species were occurring where. And so I just want to show you a couple examples from each zone. Basically, this is one of the transects, you can see the dune profile, and then below that, you can see the list of species and what was occurring. So just to orient you, the species at the top is sea oats, it's Uniole Pigniculata, and so I made it pretty much the top species on all of these for clarity, and you can see it occurs across this whole system, right? And the wider the bar is, that's how much percent cover there is essentially. So we actually see the percent cover peaks, um, about thirty or forty meters, I can't really see it so well from here. The thing to notice again, you know, the inlet is a much wider dune, right? And you get quite a bit of species diversity. When we move to the east end, it's a dramatic difference. Here, we're seeing a much shorter dune, and you're also seeing, you know, most of the species are constricted to this area that's fifteen and twenty meters, so I really suggest to the town to focus on an area like this where they can enhance the diversity and really try and build out that profile more. The east reach, um, looks much better in terms of approaching something like a stabler system, because we're getting more diversity here, we're getting plants that are spreading out across the system, but we're still not seeing, you know, the frontal dune development so much yet, right? Maybe over time we will. The pier, here's what we're seeing, again, it's, um, kind of a shallower system, but we do get quite a bit of diversity, and the sea oats is actually doing really well across the whole front of that dune. The west reach is similar to the east area, I felt like those had pretty similar profiles, and then for comparison's sake, this is the west area, this is the most stable portion that you have, and you can really see that coming out here with all of these different species that are occurring across that system. Um, I included some images for the town, I know they're hard to see here, but this is satellite imagery from twenty seventeen of our different zones, and there's really nothing in here, um, so it's very sparse if there is any planting, and I think maybe it was Hurricane Matthew in twenty sixteen that wiped out a lot of those plants.
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah.
Some of your plants you got listed, are you gonna see some of them further back from the ocean in the yard, or some they're closer to the ocean?
Definitely, and you can see that on this image, right? So, for instance, the ones at the bottom, they're only occurring in that area that's farther back. And so I think these figures are really great for showing you kind of generally where you start to see certain species come in, and I tried to arrange them in that way so that they're organized by distance that you find them.
I mean, is that a factor, the type of plant it is, or the soil, or?
Some of it is a factor, the type of plant, yeah, there's certain species that are only gonna start coming in fifteen or twenty meters behind that dune. And then like you see with sea oats, it really can occur ubiquitously across the dune system.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, so with this, what I really just want to show is there's planting that occurred in twenty eighteen, this is a lower resolution image than this, but you can see the sprouts coming in, and then by twenty nineteen, we really get good development and flushing out of those plantings. So you can see that it is... So you can see that it is successful in the areas that you're doing it. Another side note that I wanted to point out was, in the west area, I saw this dune morning glory at the front of at least one of the dunes. And there was a lot of cover of it, actually, so it's this species here. You can see that the cover's really high, at the toe, so at zero meters, at two. And it drops off some, but it's still there at four and five. And I looked into this species some more, because I was intrigued by it, it was a mat across the dunes. And I read that it's really great at stabilizing the dunes. And, you know, that made me think, like, this is another thing to consider, is expanding that diversity, including some of these species, in concert with sea oats, might actually help you build those dunes faster. Because it forms a really dense mat, and it's going to help trap that sand. I only saw it in a couple of other places, and it was more interior in the dune systems. Oh, this is what I was thinking, from the pier area. So, on my figures that I showed you, sea oats cover was pretty high at the pier, you know, two meters, four meters, five meters, ten meters. But then I noticed a drop-off around twelve meters, and so you get some bare patches. And if you look at some of the aerial photos, you can see that really well, that around twelve meters or so, there's a lot of bare patches. I don't know, maybe that's from overwashes and a lot of salinity in the soil, I'm not sure. And then, this is just to show you the east end, where you can see that scarfing that's happening. This was actually a photo I took, Oscar and I came out here after the hurricane, just to kind of take a look at what had happened. And so some of that fencing had been ripped out. So, I'll just summarize for you, I know this text is really hard to see, but essentially, I'm just thinking you should consider planting some additional species, or at least broadcasting seed of things like dune morning glory, or some of those other species, like, look at those dune profiles that I gave you and the species that are occurring. Maybe think about some of those as well. The east end is an area to really focus on, because you're getting a very shallow dune system there, not a lot of diversity. So building that out, the east reach as well, needs some more concentrated efforts of planting and dune creation. And like I said, the east end does have that dramatic scarfing, so something to help stabilize that area. Also, there were several areas of notable bare patches, so really looking back through some of that imagery and trying to figure out where are those bare patches, where can we focus our efforts. Because sea oats is clonal, I think it's going to do really well in the areas that you're already planting it. You know, just give it time, and you'd be better served by spending time looking at those bare patches. And, yeah, that's what I got for you. Any questions?
When you theorize that some of the bare patches might be overwashed salinity or something, is there some way we can do some, it's like soil testing? In any way to get a measure of whether or not that is the case? And if that were the case, are there certain alternatives that have a higher tolerance for high salinity?
That is a great question. Yeah, you know, you can do like soil chlorides and get a measure of, maybe compare those areas to the non-bare areas and see first, is there a difference in that soil chloride concentration? And then, if so, yeah, I would consider looking at species that are considered to be halophytes, that are going to grow, that are going to tolerate the salt, essentially. That's a good question.
Have you looked at other islands and compared us to them, or...
I'm in the process right now of comparing to Masonburg, so to really look at a completely undeveloped system. I have a graduate student working on that, and we should have some more information by the end of this semester. We're also, the town, you know, didn't ask us to come out for a post-hurricane survey, but Oscar and I, being scientists, we were very curious, so we wanted to, you know, compare those as well. And I haven't analyzed that data either, but we're hoping to have some comparison. We came out, I think it was like September, early September. But I don't have any other islands that are developed to see how their dunes are looking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
So for the next study, it would be Dr. Backstrom.
Hello, everyone. Again, thank you very much for supporting these studies for Dr. Shipp and I. It's been a great pleasure to be able to do this and work with the town with these initiatives. So I'll be looking at, we're going to be moving away from the dunes and dune vegetation symbol, we're going to be focusing more on our actual inlets. So this, we'll be looking at inlet induced shoreline changes along Holden Beach from around 2000 to 2019, so approximately the last twenty years. The basis for this really comes from a study developed by Dr. Bill Cleary at DNC Wilmington. He's a, he was my mentor, coastal geologist, he was there for many, many years. Really, really the expert in Farid Islands along here in North Carolina. So, he is really an inspiration for a lot of his work. So speaking with Dean, again, one of the initiatives was for us to look at inlet induced changes since about 2000, because he, Dr. Cleary produced a report, he looked at inlet change, I think probably from the thirties or forties up until about 1996, that's when the atlas ended. So, one of the ideas was, let's see what's really changed over approximately the last twenty years, especially with the sequence of hurricanes that we've had over. We had Matthew and Floyd and Florence and Ezeias, although we won't be able to capture Ezeias in here. So, presentation outlined real quick, just brief on the study area. Obviously, we know we're here in Holden Beach, the two inlets, Sheldon Inlet and Lockwood Folly Inlet. Just a brief introduction to tidal inlet morphology definitions. Some of the data and methods we used to compile this report, some of the previous work and conclusions from Cleary and Martin, which is again this atlas that we're basing a lot of this work on. And then, we'll be looking at the results for inlet and shoreline analysis from 2000 to 2000, apologies, whatever, there should be 2019, for Sheldon Inlet and Lockwood Folly Inlet, only should I correct that for you. And then, we'll be looking at some of the data delivered, we'll be plodding to the town and the technology. So, in North Carolina, we have approximately twenty-two tidal inlets that extend all the way from the Virginia border all the way to the border with South Carolina. Many of these inlets, some are very, very stable, inlets like Bowdoinlet, very large, very stable. Others migrate, rapidly migrate tidal inlet systems, like Mason Inlet on Retsal Beach, the north end near Shell Island. We'll be focusing on Sheldon Inlet. Anyway, Sheldon Inlet on the west side of Holden Beach, and Lockwood Folly on the east side. So again, we have about twenty-two tidal inlets along North Carolina. Real quick, if we look at tidal inlet morphology, I have an example here. I believe this is Lockwood Folly, I think that's 2006 on the left. Some of the main things we're really interested in, as we see, as you can see that main tidal inlet channel that is hugging along that right-hand side there, that's basically our ebb channel. So, as the water flows in and then comes out, as the water ebbs out of the tidal inlet, it kind of follows that main channel. That main channel can change orientation, and as that ebb channel changes orientation, thereby impacts the tidal delta, which is the sand deposit just to the left-hand side there. And the changing ebb delta, in turn, influences shoreline erosion on the adjacent shorelines. So, in many ways, it's the tidal inlet, the orientation of the tidal inlet, the ebb tidal delta or the tidal inlet, as that shifts and kind of wags its tail around, that really starts influencing adjacent shorelines. And we've seen this probably impacts about, as far as about two kilometers on either side of the inlet itself, so it would occur on both islands. But depending on the orientation of the tidal, the ebb tidal, the orientation of that, then we'll see what changes take place. So, that's really what we're going to be focusing on in the study, is as we go through these photographs from 2000 onwards, you'll see, you'll notice a clear difference in as that channel begins to change orientation. And again, that influences your shoulder side and then the adjacent shoreline. So, how did we go about doing this? First, we needed to obtain aerial photographs or satellite images. So we're able to get aerial photographs from Army Corps of Engineers from the year 2000. Satellite imagery really started post-2000, so we're able to get a photo from 2000, we use, that is our baseline. And then, we were able to get high-resolution satellite imagery from Spencer Royal, that's I U S Army Corps of Engineers, for 2006, 2011, 2015, and 2019. So we're able to get about, since 2000, we have about five years, separate years, ranging from about four to five years, and we'll be looking at that imagery. The idea is, we bring these images in, we reference them geographically, so that they're all in the same location. And then what we do is, we, then we just come along, we use a program called G I S, we come along, and we kind of just click and digitize along the shoreline. And the shoreline, in this case, is often defined as the wet-dry line. I just want to note that there are some, it's not a perfect science, depending on your tidal range, there might be storm surge, sometimes there's, the clarity of the water might have an influence. So, you know, there are errors there, probably within a few meters, so it's not an exact science. If you had two experts digitizing the same shoreline, you'd probably have slightly different results anyways. So again, we did our best, and as you can see in the example there, we are trying to follow the shoreline as close as to the town with the red line shown there. Then what we would do, we would compare the different years. So for example, on the bottom right, you can see the red line, that shows, that's the year 2000, and then, the green line, I believe is from 2006 or 2011. So the idea is, we're able to compare what these shorelines look like from one sequence of satellite images to the next. Then we measure the difference, so we have the blue line shown there. So I looked at two main areas, again, this is just kind of an overview. One is near the inlet throat, so you can see kind of inside the inlet, and then another one, which I call the oceanfront, is further to the left, in this case, so that'd be more kind of your oceanfront. So I did this for both inlets. So for Sheldon Inlet, if we go from a historical context, again, these are, these are all brought in from Cleary and Martin from the North Carolina Sea Grant publication from 1996. Real quick, you can see the top left, that's 1949, so again, pretty much before we had a lot of developments along Holden Beach. And then, we have another sequence from 1959, then as we work our way down, 1962, top left, top right, 1974, 1989, and 1996. And some of the things to look at here is really, if you look at the, again, the orientation of that main channel as it comes out of the inlet, you can see, for example, in 1974, it's very much hugging that Holden Beach shoreline. Whereas in other years, for example, 1962, which is in the bottom left, you can see it has almost a shore-normal orientation, it's almost coming straight south from, from kind of that back barrier area. So again, you can see these things have changed, it changes orientation and influences the adjacent shorelines. So, overall, for Sheldon Inlet, it is, has been relatively stable. If you look back at charts from the seventeen and eighteen hundreds, it was still there. So it hasn't really moved too much in terms of its position historically. However, again, as that ebb channel changes orientation, has major impacts on the adjacent shoulders. What we found, what Cleary found in this, as confirmed in some of the recent studies, Dr. Shipp and I have been doing, is when the main ebb channel is orientated towards the southeast, again, towards Holden Beach, and hugging, kind of hugging that shoreline, we, there tends to be accretion along the western edge of Holden Beach. When this, when the ebb channel is orientated with the southerly direction, there's, tends to be, it's the most stable form, and there tends to be accretion on actually both sides of, along both islands. As it changes orientation more towards the southwest, then we start seeing some of the erosion taking place. So again, depending on the, really, the bottom line is, as that tidal inlet, the ebb channel changes orientation, it really influences the adjacent shoreline. And we don't know why these ebb channels actually change orientation. It could be hurricane-associated, or with big flooding events, or just kind of the natural cycle of changes in sediment transport. So I'm just going to go through these quickly, this is an aerial photograph we were able to obtain from the US Army Corps of Engineers. So this was a scanned image that I was able to geo-reference. Again, Sheldon Inlet 2000, again, notice how that ebb channel is very much hugging the Holden Beach shoreline. Some of the important other things to take note here, you can see where that main ebb delta, the big pile of sand, kind of to the, to the left. And then you can see the small channel along, that's Ocean Isle, I believe, is that, that's Ocean Isle occurring? You can see that small, thin channel along the Ocean Isle side, that's your flood channel. So the water tends to come out of your ebb channel, and then when the water comes back in, it kind of goes into your flood channel. And often, wherever we get these flood channels, those are typically associated with erosion. So we kind of have the outgoing ebb channel, and then the water flows in through those flood channels. So that's, again, note 2000. If we move in towards 2006, you can already see how that changing ebb channel has already changed orientation there. It's hugging Sheldon, that Holden Beach shoreline. Here, you can already see how it's beginning to change orientation and move towards more perpendicular or more of the southerly orientation. So, if we look at from 2000 to 2006, what we've noticed is, we had major inlet throat erosion. So if we look right inside the inlet and move kind of inland from the inlet, there was significant erosion there, about a hundred twenty-five meters compared to 2000, although the oceanfront shoreline, we've seen an accretion of about a hundred and seven meters. So again, as it changes orientation, we start seeing these changes. That's 2006. This is again, satellite imagery, high resolution, about thirty centimeters resolution, Sheldon Inlet for 2011. From 2000 to 2011, you can tell that main ebb channel hasn't changed orientation too much. Again, inlet throat erosion of a hundred twenty-five meters, oceanfront shoreline accretion of about a hundred twenty meters. So there's been a continuing advancement of your oceanfront shoreline. This is 2015, again, August 8th. And here, it's a bit harder to tell exactly where that ebb channel is, but you can see it is kind of coming south, and then it starts bearing slightly towards the southwest. So, I know it's a bit difficult, it's, sometimes it's hard to guess, it goes back perfect imagery that we're looking for. Again, inlet throat erosion, in this case, is only about sixty-five meters. Oceanfront shoreline accretion is about a hundred twenty meters, so very similar to 2011, so no major changes here. And then, our final recent one, this is, this is almost exactly two years ago. You can see there's, it begins, it looks like it's beginning to split, right? So we have the one channel that is now hugging the Ocean Isle side, and then it looks like it's, we're starting to get a new channel coming straight down the middle. So it's going to be interesting, well, we have 2020 imagery from Google and other places. It's going to be interesting what happens here, whether it begins to shift back towards that southeast or the orientation, or whether it's kind of trying to find its balance here. So again, inlet throat erosion, significant in this case, up to two hundred two meters. Oceanfront shoreline accretion of about a hundred sixty-three meters on the oceanfront of Sheldon Inlet. So again, interesting features here of the last approximately nineteen years. So, what I did was, these are some, the examples of the different kinds of shorelines. So again, each shoreline, we, graduate students now digitize the shoreline, and then we compare them over the years. So, I decided the color in this, I decided to go with rainbow colors, right? Royd, red, orange, yellow, green, blue. So the earlier ones, red is 2000, so you can see the shoreline there, and then 2006 is the orange. You can, you can, you can see how that oceanfront shoreline has really extended outwards. And remained relatively stable from 2006 to about 2019. You can see the blue, yellow, and orange, all approximately the same place, but you can see that 2000 was quite different. Same thing with the inlet throat, 2000, there's quite a lot of accretion there. Again, that part of the beach has been moving westwards, and since about 2006, you can tell erosion that's taken place. So that's, that's pretty much the summary for Sheldon Inlet. For Lockwood? I'm happy to take any questions.
No, we were just, Gerald used to drive his shrimp boat, he'd probably seen all of that happen.
Fantastic. If we come to Lockwood Folly, again, now we're looking at the eastern section of Holden Beach. Again, here's some imagery from Taran Martin's atlas, again, they went back as far as 1938 in this instant. And again, notice very much that ebb channel orientation, 1938, you can see this huge kind of snake pattern, snake-like pattern. In 1949, 1959, it has a very similar pattern, kind of leaning towards that southeast side. 1974 has more of a shore norm, or kind of a southern trajectory. And the same thing in 1980- And the same thing in 1987, it appears to be moving slightly more towards the east over those later years. So again, looking back in time, overall stable position, though, the inlet midpoint has shifted about 150 meters to the east since 1938 to 1996, and it's all based on theories report. Major changes to adjacent shorelines, very similar, again, these inlets really influenced adjacent shorelines. When the main Ebb channel is orientated to the southeast, so an example here would be 1949, for example, then we have erosion along the eastern side of Holden Beach. So again, the example here would be the 1930s to 1970s. The example here is we're probably getting some kind of flood channel that's hugging the Holden Beach side and causing the erosion to take place. Since about 1987, the main Ebb channel is orientated to the south, erosion stopped since 1974 to 1986, the erosion wasn't ongoing so much. So that's the story behind Lockwood Folly Inlet. So we'll just go through some of these photographs, Lockwood Folly Inlet, this is 2000. Again, notice the orientation of the inlet. So actually, if we go back and look at 1996, which would be your bottom, bottom right, so again, notice the orientation of the channel. And then if we come back four years or continuation, you can see it hasn't really changed that much, it still seems to, it seems to like this position here. So if we move forward to 2006, again, you can see within six years, that Ebb channel has really changed orientation and taken more of this southerly route. So from 2000 to 2006, we've seen some inlet throat accretion, that would be along that eastern side, up along the inlet, if we could move up to the central part of the inlet, inland, we've had an accretion of about 50 meters and ocean front shoreline accretion also of about 7 meters. So it seems to be a very good position right there. From 2000, so now we're looking at 2011, again, you can see that's kind of southerly route of this main Ebb channel, although it appears to be, there's, it appears to be some kind of flood channel hugging that very up near the, kind of the dune base there. You can see that channel, that's, that smaller channel aligned almost directly west, so that appears to be the flood channel where water is coming in and maybe causing some kind of erosion. So from 2000 to 2011, inlet throat accretion of about 50 meters, ocean front shoreline accretion of about 7 meters. So we really haven't seen much change from 2006. So again, that channel has maintained its same kind of orientation, we haven't really seen any major changes in shore, ocean shoreline accretion. Again, notice it's very difficult, if you look at this side of Holden Beach, it's a bit difficult to determine exactly where that white dry line is. You can see some of the sandbars offshore, you know, whether it's dry or wet or whatever the tidal level is, you know, so you can see where there, there can be some difficulties in determining exactly where that shoreline is or that white dry line. From 2000 to 2015, again, you can slight, you can see a slight orientation towards the south and west now, nothing dramatic. Inlet throat, we're not really seeing any change from 2000, and ocean front shoreline accretion also about 100 meters. So nothing significant here. And then if we come to 2019, again, inlet throat minimal change, ocean front shoreline accretion of about 120 meters. And you can see how it starts getting quite complicated as these different bars start welding on to that Holden Beach shoreline. So it takes quite a bit of magic to be able to determine exactly how these things really work, and it's quite fantastic to see these aerial images, exciting stuff. So, and then if we come back, Lockwood Folly Inlet, so now we're looking at, again, at those shoreline changes, red, orange, yellow, green, blue. So again, red in this case indicates the 2000 shoreline. You can see that little bump up near the inlet throat, that red sticking out. And then from about 2006 all the way to 2019, so that would be the orange, yellow, green, and blue. You can see they're fairly consistent with each other, especially near the inlet portion, they're quite close to each other. Then as we move out towards the ocean front shoreline, you can see the most recent one, 2019, that's probably the widest beach we've seen since we've been looking at these studies. So again, it appears that we're seeing an accretional trend along this part of Holden Beach when, when that Ebb, Ebb channel is orientated in that direction. And again, it very much confirms the, the results from Cleary Martin from that previous That's the same one. So just, just to end this, I can go back if you guys.
Does dredging have any impact on the channel, or is that just a bump in route?
It would depend how intense the dredging is. I presume the, the minimal dredging that takes place here, I mean, it, it might seem significant, but if we look at it from a large scale perspective, it, I would, I would, I don't think it has any major influence on the orientation of Ebb channel. There might be smaller differences here and there, and it probably depends on the volumes that they're extracting and how much time they spend dredging in that.
I mean, I imagine Mother Nature probably a little bit stronger than what the dredge can do to stop her, but.
Yeah, I mean, as it's, as you're putting that sand, obviously, it's probably a side casting dredge, so that sand's probably being disturbed almost immediately due to those tidal currents and reorienting itself. So again, it's helpful for kind of small channel navigation areas, but I think that the larger overall picture, it's unlikely that it's having a major impact. Dr. Cleary often said, if you can get your inlets to come straight out, that would be, everyone would be happy, but we just can't control it anymore. Nature is very, very difficult to control. And again, you can see there from 2000, you can see the accretion that's taking place. Again, the red line indicates the 2000 shoreline, and you can see that we have had quite a bit of accretion there from the red to blue, that's probably about 120 meters. So so far, it's, it's looking quite good. And then finally, just to confirm the work that Sheri and I plan to do for the town, so we'll be providing two hard copy reports of each of our studies, probably spiral bound. We'll provide you with the digital reports of, of what we presented before, we'll take any comments we have, any final comments we have, and we'll make sure we address those. We'll provide you with some of the GIS data, so if you have GIS people here, they can take the shape files or the database, work with those. I can provide you with aerial and satellite images, I cannot provide you with the really high resolution geo-referenced images because of copyright issues, but I can certainly provide you examples of images that we just saw today. And then Sheri can confirm all stuff, Dr. Schipman can confirm if there's, obviously the drone imagery will be able to provide to you, and.
GIS data for a place of transits and same with satellite imagery. I'll give you some images, JPEGs of what I collected, but I can't give you the entire files, be them copyright.
And we'll provide you with a hard drive too, and we'll, we'll send those reports to you, I'll see if everyone's okay. And if you want copies of these presentations, we can also include them if you'd like. And then just again, thank you very much for.
Thank you. I have a question, Doctor.
Of course.
So if I, if I heard you correctly, it's your professional opinion that the accretion on the east end of Holden Beach is more the result of the flow of the inlet rather than the stabilization efforts that we take by putting sand on the beach almost every other year?
Does your beach nourishment extend that far to the east end? How far do you think it goes?
The town beach nourishment effort stopped at Block Eight Runner. The Corps of Engineers dredge projects begin or end at Block Eight Runner, coming back from the east, starting about Amazing Grace. So every other year, the Corps has been placing 100 to 200,000 cubic yards, not from the inlet throat, but primarily from the inlet crossing with the waterway and the binway.
Okay. So back around this area here?
Yes.
So they're taking the sand there and placing it along here somewhere?
About right where you fingered it.
Okay, so that's probably where it ends?
It starts there and goes back west.
It goes further towards the west.
About 2008.
I'm sure, I mean, it's, it's great to be able to put the sand on there, but what we have found with these tidal inlets, it, the influence is often probably about a kilometer, sometimes even two kilometers from, from the inlet. So granted, it never hurts to have the sand placed there, but again, I can't, I can't tell exactly which one's more dominant, but certainly from what we can see, the, the influence of the inlet is significant. And that's why they're considered inlet hazard areas to coastal management.
Is there anything in this data that would suggest to you that we need to be doubling our inlet hazard area at each inlet? I, I don't mean to pin you down or anything, but.
Well, from.
We're more than doubling.
Doctor, I think Dr. Cleary believed, I'd have to go back and look at some reporting, but I think he said, we're, we're probably talking about one kilometer from, from the inlet, I think is probably where we're seeing the major changes. So that's probably a place you wouldn't avoid any kind of hard structures or infrastructure or home building or anything that, that might become in peril, especially something ocean front or right near the water. Now, if you're, you know, inside the dunes or places like that, you're probably okay. But I mean, you can see the difference there between the red and the blue line, you, obviously you probably wouldn't want anything between those areas, so. Coastal management, I think they're updating some of their coastal hazards and inlet hazard areas, I think they're coming up with a report soon, I think the last one was 2013.
That, that was part of my question is that, if, they went to, yeah, the last, we saw last year, they went to dramatically extend the inlet hazard area on both of our inlets. And I'm talking about dramatically miles. And what I'm asking is, is there anything from the data you see that would indicate to you that, that both of our inlets, well, that half of our island would be in an inlet hazard area?
Again, I only went about as far as, as these imagery, so if I went, we could, we could continue those lines further. Again, it's only 19 years worth of data, and if you go back to the 1930s, you can probably see a lot more change. It would be interesting to maybe comparison of the 1930s to the current ones and really see where, where is the maximum extent of change that we've seen, because now we'll have close to 80 years of data, so I think that'll be a much better picture of really what's happening. I'm sure that the coastal management, I'm sure they're doing the best they can and using the best science available to them. But you know, it's, it's a very, it's a difficult choice, obviously, for communities and coastal communities, so. You know, we're, we're just scientists trying to show what we have, the decisions are really that to, to people like yourself. I don't know if I really answered that question.
I understand what you're saying is basically we need to look further. We need to look at, from the east end further west, and from the west end further east to really see a bigger picture to where there is a long-term influence that you could say, yes, this should be the entire hazard area, and that we're just focusing right now on a very small part of these inlet areas. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so it'd be basically where all the shorelines kind of come together, wherever we have that point. As you can see on that image, if we look at the very far kind of western side where all those profiles come together, they're almost together in this case. So you, from, just from looking at this image, and if I had to guess, I would say, well, the influence of the inlet in this case is, if we have the scale bar on the bottom is 800 meters, you know, it's probably a little bit longer than that, I'd say the inlet influence is probably, probably about a kilometer in this case, just looking at this imagery. So that would be the, you know, those, those would be the kind of things you probably want to look at.
Okay.
Yeah, I can leave a comment on that. When I was preparing for this, I actually looked up some of the historical topo maps because I didn't have time to find like old satellite imagery, and I was wondering that as well, like, could I see accretion at the west area, how much has it changed over time? And some of the topo maps, you can get these free from USGIS, I can certainly send somebody a link if they shoot me an email. You look back at the 1930s, and you can see a dramatic difference in the shape of the inlet area and how the island looked, as well as there's pools of water that are in certain areas, like, you know, kind of in the doubling area that you're talking about that are in the island. And so it might give you a good idea if you start looking, you know, back to the 1930s, see how the island has really changed over time, to give you an idea of why, you know, Canada's making some of these policy changes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item number eight. Police report, Chief Dixon.
Well, I guess the last time we met was before Christmas, so police department, we made it through Christmas and New Year's good, trying to get used to writing 21 instead of 20. The only other thing, we recently swore in a new police officer, Officer Preston Connolly. Very glad to have him on board, and he'll spend the next eight to 12 weeks in our field training program. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
No major crime wedge or anything like that?
No, sir, no, sir, everything's good right now.
All, all good. Item number nine. Discussion and possible action on ordnance 21 dash zero one. Formerly ordnance 20 dash seven, tending ordnance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinances, Section 94 dash 03. Frontal dune policy and regulations cannot be adopted until 24 hours from time of the public hearing. Inspector, Director Evans.
This is a, this is the, the ordinance that we presented at the last meeting, it's the one that just went through, it's public hearing, it's, you can prove it to be set to, I guess, to the next meeting, so that you can give it approval at that time. But that's what, it's on the, it's on the agenda, so yes, you can discuss it, and then you can move to your next meeting and vote to approve it or, or deny it, either way. But you have to wait based on the COVID rules to take action.
We need a motion.
I, I would move that we actually put this on the February agenda for approval of this ordinance.
Saica. Any discussion?
The only question I would have would, do we need to wait that long? Is there?
You, I'm assuming based on what Heather tells me, it's got to be 24 hours. If you wait 30 days, it's up to you, but it has to be at least 24 hours.
I guess my, my phrase of question, is there a need to move it up quicker than 30 days? Do you see a need to move it up quicker than 30 days?
I mean, I, it, it all depends. I mean, you know, there might be somebody out there that's waiting to, you know what I mean, because it's actually been on the agenda twice, there could be somebody who's, you know, looking to do some development or, or something of that nature, but I, you know what I mean, that's somebody else's planning, I would assume. But I, I, we don't have any real need, I don't know that there's anyone who's.
Just pushing.
It's pushing, well, you know, I, I just don't know. I mean, I, you, you can meet and approve it, I don't know what difference it makes in 10 days or 30 days, other than it could help a developer somewhere, if they got plans, you know what I mean?
I just didn't know if you had people on the fence or, you know.
Yeah, well, it, but either way, you can, based off of the ordinance, if, if someone wanted to do something under this current criterion, you know what I mean, you know what I mean, they'd have to build a house first, they wouldn't be able to just come and have a pool, you know what I mean? They would have to do permitting and that kind of thing. So they, they would be going through a process, you know what I mean? And any developer, anybody that's doing land acquisition or land development is doing so at their own risk anyway, per profit, so you, I, I see no need. It would work out for me the way.
You think we'll be fine to wait until our next meeting?
I think so. If you made application to me today, we're not going to see it for, you know, we're not going to get a hold of it for, for a week or two, 14 days, and you'll be one of the handful of people that can provide all the millions of pieces of paper that we, we desire to get you there, you know what I mean? Usually, you know what I mean, we, we get, some of them we get out fast, some of them we don't, but the line's pretty long right in front of you right now, so I don't know who it would affect that much.
Got a second? Any further discussion? I suppose we need a vote. All in favor? Item, item number 10 on the agenda, discussion. Impossible scheduling of a date to hold the public hearing on ordnance 21 dash zero two, formerly ordnance 20 dash 18, and ordnance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinances, Section 157.006. Definition. Height measured. Definition, height measuring point. Inspector Evans?
Okay, this, this, uh, this is, uh, to set the public hearing, we do have a consistency statement that was written by staff of the planning board, uh, set a meeting, but it could not make it form. So we did bring the consistency statement forward. I'm not sure that it's necessary to review the consistency statement before setting the public hearing. You can set the public hearing and then, I'm assuming, review, take into consideration the consistency statement before you approve. So, but what this is, for a matter of public record, is this is adding an exemption into our height measuring point to allow those structures that are located in an X zone to be able to build to the same standards as those in a V or an A zone based on height restriction. There are some pluses to this if you're in an X zone, but you have to give up something if you go to the exception. Pretty much the way it works now is that you're in an X zone, and you take advantage of being in an X zone, then your height, and, and you try to meet our minimum criteria in the X zone, you're basically cheated out of four feet that you would have if you built in a much more restricted standard. You're in an area that doesn't require a five-day restriction, but yet we're restricting you four feet. If you were in a A or V zone, you, you would gain those four feet. The drawback is this, if you choose to use the exception, which is really already available to you, if you choose to use this exception and you're in the next zone, then you have to understand that you will gain four extra feet, but you will lose the ability to do anything under the structure because you're doing the exceptions for A and B zone, other than limited parking and storage. So what happens is, is that we say that if you're in the next zone, and if you wanted, if you don't want to take advantage of this exception, then you have to meet our minimum requirements under B, and you can then, you can close that area and do a swap, or you can do nothing there and have parking and close it in later. If you choose to do this exception, then what you're, you're, you're essentially doing is, is building to the same standards as an A or V zone, and then you will not be able to utilize that property underneath there for nothing but storage or parking. So, or you're gaining four feet, you're basically saying, I don't, I'd lose that, the use of that property, and I gain it for the same reason that we would give it in both the A and B zones. That's pretty much the highlight.
Do we have that much land in the X zone?
Yeah, we got quite, we, we actually had a house that, that, that ended up, when we changed the, and this is a good discussion, when we changed the way we measured heights, we did it because it was creating, the old measurement standards was creating these very bland, un, un, aesthetically appealing structures, because everybody was trying to go as high as they could. When we changed that standard, which was done by, and I want to tap my, me and David on the back here, we had a citizen committee that was formed before there was ever citizens' committees, and we formed it for this. We brought in engineers, townsfolk, real estate agents, contractors, and we sat down and redid this revision. I want to say sometime I believe, well, during the third day, because there was a lot of problems with it. But the main problem was, was that we became just as competitive as Ocean Isle and other areas, because now we weren't building plain boxes with flat roofs. And effectively, uh, you know, that, that's what, what we did when we changed the height measuring point. And so what happens is, is that in the X zone, we had one on Russell Avenue where we went into an X zone, it's sitting right down there on the corner, that house ended up having to cheat itself out of certain things that they wanted compared to a house sitting right next to them that was in an A zone, when they were literally in the less restrictive area. They ended up, you know, ended up with a weird-looking roof, basically, when it arrived there, because they were trying to salvage what they wanted underneath that four-foot restriction. So, um, it brings more uniform across the island. We do have more X zones now than we had before. And if you build to the exception, there's another thing that goes for you, and this happens every day. Because we do have more X zones, I suspect that when we get our next payment map, some of those X zones are going to go away. And if people put structures, put bathrooms and things like that underneath their home in those X zones, trying to, to get as much as they could because they were cheated out of four feet, then they're going to have a non-conforming house next go-around. One that was permitted legally, but now won't be able to meet those post-new firm standards. And so what happens is, that's not really a big deal unless they want to do a major renovation or they have major damage, and then they got to go back to that original standard, which means they could tell that tear outs after tear outs, though, that they really paid good money. And the next firm max will probably come along in the next six or seven years. So it, it's got some pluses across the board. If I was a contractor, it has some really good sales features too, without to be one of them, you know what I mean? So, I think it's a really good ordinance, I'm just thinking it needs to be put on the agenda for public hearing.
One question. The four feet that you're talking about, will that allow more homes to be built that are three stories? I mean, as we go along the beach now, there are a couple of homes that have been able to architecturally and engineering, put in three stories rather than two. Will this result in more of those homes?
Well, we've had, to me, this is like the big house issue, you know, when we asked that, that we could have more big house issues, but I said this when that happened, they ain't a marketable, and we've had one, you know what I mean? We just now passed rules that would keep from having another, but we've only had two across the island in its history, I mean, we've only had one since that one was built in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. Those houses that do that don't become the best marketable houses. They have three stories, but they ain't very pleasant to look at from the beach. And so, and it's more cost, it's, it's more costly because now it's a habit of four. And there are, there are some of them out there, but they're very few and far between because you're, the, the best you could pull off on a good house here on the beach is about seven feet, if you really work at it. If you're in an X zone and you take the exception, you're going to be struggling with the same thing.
But the, the answer is that they, they will be, it'll make it easier to have three-story houses. Whether they choose to do it or not is, is a, is a different issue.
Well, if, when you say three-story houses, it ain't going to change anything in the A and B zones that don't already exist.
The X zone?
Well, X zones can already have a three-story because they're not limited. They're, they could have a three-story right now.
From the ground.
They can build on the, on the ground floor.
Okay.
They just have to be eight feet off the ground based off this ordinance. They can already build three stories out there.
Okay, let, let me rephrase the question. Three stories high?
Well, that was, that's what I'm saying.
Not, not counting the, not counting the ground floor. Three, three stories on, on top of their pile.
In an X zone, base flood elevation is below the dirt, which means that's the, that's the, that's the bottom floor.
Okay.
In a B house, the base, that design flood elevation is two feet plus, plus whatever the base flood elevation is. In most cases, that's up there at eight, seven, eight feet, which means your first floor is starting there. So you, you see the difference? You could already, every house could have three stories in a next zone already.
But you're using bottom floor.
That's right. But if you go for the exception, so you gain the extra four feet, it's going to be harder to have those three. So i- is it going to be easier? Not in X zone, it's going to be harder if you take the exception.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to set a public hearing?
Yes.
Next meeting.
Next one. All right. Would you, would you have a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we put this on the agenda for public hearing in our February meeting.
So prior, prior to the February meeting, as we did tonight?
Yeah, prior to the regular meeting, yes.
And Murdock second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Item eleven, discussion and possible action on land use plan. Inspect, Inspector Evans again.
This is it. Um, this is, this is the, the final stage, the final leg. We managed to get here. There was a lot of work done in this. Uh, there was a lot of optical aids handed out, printed out at the last meeting or the meeting before. Once we do this, we will have a camp comprehensive land use plan that meets all the seven B requirements under the state guidelines, and will also help us meet our new one sixty D guidelines, or one, the statutory requirements under one sixty D, which requires all towns to have a comprehensive land use plan now. That will come be ahead of game in some, some places. Coastal areas will be ahead of game. But this is your land use plan, your channel land use plan. Now, we'll say that it took a long time to get to this point. Part of it was caused by COVID. We were prepared for this last year, but part of it was caused by COVID, but the town needed an upgrade. The town's got an upgrade, and this is a very good plan. We didn't, just didn't vote yes or no.
Did, did, uh, did we see any opposition from anybody?
No. There was numerous public hearings that, uh, they were on for a long period. We actually had one extra public hearing during that, but we didn't have to hold.
Okay, all right.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopts the new land use plan as was presented, I think with changes a couple of months ago.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you agree with that, Evans?
Yes, sir.
Any opposed? None. Okay. All righty. Item twelve on the agenda, discussion and possible action on parks and rec master plan responses. Assistant Town Manager Ferguson.
Yes, sir. Our current Parks and Rec master plan was completed in May of two thousand and twelve. It is dated. If we plan to compete for any part of projects, we need to update that. And, and just in general, the rule of thumb is that you update those after five years, so we need to update our plan. In November, we sent out an RFQ, which was in your agenda packet. Those responses were due back by December seventh. We directly solicited eight companies, and six of those returned proposals to us. Highly recognized companies throughout the state, women and women nation, and very valued responses. The town spent December and January with staff, bringing those proposals, restoring them, with related three families, which were McAdams, Alfred Bench, and company, and McGill. And then we did follow-up interviews on Monday, January eleventh, mainly to, the proposals that came in were very good, but we needed to further understand how those companies proposed to move forward with this master plan process during COVID regulations and restrictions. Asked about five follow-up questions, and from that, the town is recommending that the Parks and Rec master plan update be awarded to McGill. Suggested motion in the Ward of the Town of Holden Beach Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update to McGill, and authorize the town manager to negotiate with the firm regarding the cost of the contract and execute accordingly within the existing budgeted resources.
I guess I, I have one question. What, what is it that made McGill stand out from the other two firms that we had an opportunity to look at here?
Two things. They had better understanding and were currently working, actually with Brunswick County, the county department on their update and discussing how they would be able to do park for meetings, maybe outdoor spaces like picnic shelters, as well as the technology for Zoom meetings. But also, one of the things that put them over the top and one of the specific questions that we asked was their success in part of grants based on their work product, and theirs was outnumbering the other companies by weeks and bounds. And in fact, the former Parkland representative for our area that worked with us on our park development over here, who was the person that came down and made sure we were in grant compliance and handled our reimbursements, is now retired and is working with McGill.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have a vote? All right. I will make a motion that we select McGill and Company to help with the Town of Holden Beach Parks and Rec's master plan and authorize the town manager to negotiate within, within his bounds.
Second.
Okay. Do we have a vote in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action on legal services proposals. Town clerk.
As directed, we solicited four attorneys for the town. We received four responses, which we provided to the board, so now the next step is for the board to decide how you would want to proceed in selecting a town attorney.
Just a reminder to everybody that when we did this the last time, we actually took everything that we got and we selected the firms that we felt were possibilities to interview, and that the whole board then, we had, I think we had five, and we devoted the better part of the day, as I recall, to interviewing them. And I actually would highly recommend that if we, that we do a similar thing, because I think it's important that the whole board is involved in, my personal opinion is it's best if the whole board is involved in the interviewing so that everyone gets the feel and flavor of the candidates. And again, we can take the four and we can, we can reduce, and unless we reduce to one that we all agreed on, I would simply recommend that we do an interview situation. It won't take as long as last time because we don't have as many.
Only thing I would suggest is, one, the criteria that we talked about was having somebody local. So one of these firms is out of Wilmington, one's out of Chapel Hill, Raleigh, or Concord, which doesn't feel very local.
Actually, I don't view Wilmington as not being local. It depends on whether or not there is a difficulty with the travel time back and forth.
Yep.
And a cost, but I would definitely agree with you that, that coming from Chapel Hill, Raleigh, that area, that's, that just doesn't work for us. But to me, Wilmington down to the border is sort of our area that's possible, depending on the conditions or the cost of travel time.
Okay. So I, I would, at least if we're going to take, do interviews, I'd knock out the one out of Chapel Hill, tell them thank you, but no thank you, and then interview the other three. I mean, I could get it down to one fairly quick based upon what I've seen here, but if, if the preference is to do interviews, I'd at least cut it to three.
I've read them all. It's, the cost is in there and I could, yeah, I could get it. I could make a decision.
I, uh.
Do you want to interview?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's more to it than, than just looking at the cost and looking at their, at their curriculum vitae, and I think it would be time well spent, even if you have a real good idea of who you prefer at this point, it still would be time well spent to have the firms come in and, and we could submit some questions to them and have them, you know? It's just.
That's fine. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing that. I said if I had to choose one, I think I could choose one right now, but I would probably like them to come in and answer our questions and meet them. Since we can't get Ms. Fox to do it, I guess we'd rather do somebody else.
Well, that's, is it going to be a cost to the town to get them to come in?
No.
Maybe she'll do a conference call or?
No, they'll, they'll come in because they want the job, right? I mean, when you go to, on the job interview.
I'm, I'm assuming it's not going to be a problem to have a person come and interview them in this room during COVID. in this room during COVID?
I'm gonna go with Mike. Not if they want the job. I mean, y'all just set that as one of your requirements, that you gotta come in and sit in the room.
I meant from our perspective, we don't have a problem bringing an individual in, because we're fewer people than the room is sized for, right? Okay.
Anybody in agreement?
Yes. So, I guess what we should do is kind of figure, I guess Heather can send something, and we'll give her when we're available and see if we can schedule something. Because it will take, I would imagine, a couple of hours to do three firms.
Right.
Okay. Alright, item number fourteen. Discussion and selection of chairman for the audit committee. Town Clerk.
The code of ordinances requires that the board choose a chairman for the audit committee every January. Currently, it's Commissioner Tyner, so the board could extend his term, or you could choose another member to serve as the chair. I have ballots, or you can vote out loud, whatever you prefer.
I propose that we extend, if he's willing to do it, Commissioner Tyner's chairmanship of the audit committee. He's willing to do it?
Yep. Especially since we're not having any meetings right now.
It will start again.
But I'll find one.
Okay. Would he?
You gotta think about it.
Okay. Let's have a motion on the floor.
We could make it simple. I've, uh...
Everybody?
Yeah. In addition to the commissioner, we're supposed to vote on the members of the board. And we can just, I've been to the meetings when they were able to attend them. I think the current members are conscientious and did a good job when they were trying to select an audit firm. And I have all the confidence in the current board members, and would suggest that we reappoint them for another term. So, I guess if I could make the motion would be that we have Commissioner Tyner remain as the chairman, and the current members also remain to serve another term on the audit committee.
I'll second. I'll second that, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Tyner. Okay, item sixteen. Discussion and possible action on revisiting the Holden Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty, Solid Waste. Commissioners Sullivan and Pat.
Chicken.
I'm not going to bite it, Daphne. I've been tried it too many times. Say it one time.
Kwakawski.
Kwakawski. Kwak...
Kwak...
What'd you say?
We just said Kwakawski.
Can we say Kwiatkowski?
You can, if you wish.
Alright, you have the floor.
Okay. I guess, just as a little background, it's been included in the packet. But I think the idea of establishing solid waste ordinance started about five years ago. There was a committee by the town. They did a lot of work. The town manager put together a whole package with their recommendations and questions and issues that were raised. And then, and that was issued, I believe, in eighteen, the report. And then we started the board, the board at that time, discussed all of those issues, and came up with what they believed was a pretty comprehensive plan, which included some of the issues that were raised, and made certain revisions to the then-existing plan. It was approved for the one, but at the very next meeting, two of the four affirmative votes were changed to the negative, and the ordinance was rescinded. As a result, I think you can see that when you go down Ocean Boulevard, never mind the side streets, but when you're driving down Ocean Boulevard, because there are no rules on when you can put your can out, we have hundreds of trash cans on Ocean Boulevard that can be there from two to ten days. And it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. And if you look at the ordinance that was passed, we've made accommodations for people. People complain that they come down and they don't rent a house. They live here. They put their trash out on a Sunday. But we've made accommodations for that, because in the off-season, you can have your trash can out forty-eight hours before it's picked up. So, if you put it out on a Sunday, that falls within the Tuesday pickup time. I don't think we can address everybody's concerns, but in my opinion, people want to live here and people want to visit here, because it's a really nice place to be. And the people are making money renting their houses. People are making money because their houses are appreciating. All of those things in order to the benefit of all the people, not just the people who live here. But the people who live here are the people who have to go past that trash when it's out there. And it just doesn't make sense, because to me, I've never lived, and I've lived in a number of places, but I've never lived in a place that doesn't have some kind of rule about when you have to put out your trash and when you have to take your trash back in. No matter where I lived. I lived in New York City. I lived in a small town in Ohio. I lived on Long Island. It doesn't make any difference. There's always some kind of rule, and somehow, people follow those rules. And so, I think if you look at the plan that we put in place, it was a reasonable expectation of what people should do to keep this town as nice as it is, and keep it attractive for people wanting to come here to spend their week, and for people who live here. And the other thing I would say is, we made a mistake in trying to allow people with the trash cans. I mean, we passed an ordinance, right? And that ordinance had a six-month break-in period. Nobody was going to be fined or issued a summons. It was more an educational period for six months. So, you could work out how you could get your trash can taken in if every once in a while you come down. You know, people would say, you know, I pay taxes. I come down here four times a year. Now I'm going to have a problem. Well, there's a way, I'm sure there's a way you can figure that out. Whether it's, somebody starts to go and pick up trash cans and charges you two dollars or something. There's a way to do it. Whether it's through the property management companies, or whether it's through the owner, they can find a way, if they put a little thought to it. So, we made a mistake, because we tried to be accommodating, and we allowed people to use the recycle can in place of a can that the ordinance calls for, depending on the size of your house. Well, to me, all that did was cause confusion, because those blue cans are out there all the time. The people picking up the trash don't know whether it's trash or recyclables. So, I think we should, at the very least, we should change that. So, a recyclable can is a recyclable can, and you have to pay the ninety dollars or whatever that gets for the other can. And the other thing is, it makes absolutely no sense to me for us to pay approximately fifty-five thousand dollars a year to roll back trash cans if there's still going to be two or three hundred trash cans on the street for a week at a time. It just makes no sense to me. Either we get the trash cans off of the street by rolling back the full trash cans, or we don't roll back any trash can and we save fifty-five thousand dollars. Because whether you have two hundred trash cans on the street, or you have five hundred trash cans on the street, it doesn't make much difference to me.
I can add to mine, because I would say that that was the most disappointing retraction that was done from the ordinance that we had passed. The ordinance, I will call it the complete ordinance that we had passed, had designated rollback of all bins, whether they had trash in them or not, so that those bins would be off the street before the influx of tourists, during tourist season on Saturday, but also any other time, so that we didn't have bins of trash sitting out in the sun for days on end, stinking. And there was pushback suddenly about, well, you know, if we, you know, for some reason, you know, we don't have the house rented the next day, or the next week, or something, that trash is going to be under the house, stinking. I'm going to say that I store my trash bin under my house, and it doesn't stink, because it's closed and it's in the shade. But that's not the point. The point is, one of our major objectives was to get the trash bins off the street on Saturdays in particular, when people are coming in, and having over two hundred of them on Ocean Boulevard from the bridge down to where I live, pretty much every week. And that's my own personal observation. Obviously, we haven't achieved it. So, to me, it's not an unreasonable expectation that bins, if they're full, get pushed back, if our objective is safety, as well as health considerations about leaving trash by the sidewalks and everything where people are going by. I looked for a lot of examples, and I found the Emerald Isle example that Heather copied and put in here. And you will see that in Emerald Isle, another beach town, that has a lot of rentals, has some residents, they actually specify times that you can roll out your trash. They have a very clear statement that rollout responsibility times, or rollout responsibility is the property owner, rental company. It's a personal responsibility. They do roll back. And they do roll back thirty or more, about thirty feet, they say, from the road. So, you know, we want to roll back to this, you know, under the house or by the side of the houses, where we're saying people should be storing their bins. Emerald Isle talks about thirty feet back, and they actually, on their webpage, when you read everything, they do discuss storage racks for bins, and they say they must be at least thirty feet from the right away. So, even if there are corrals or storage areas, they did specify a distance, which I feel is appropriate, because we do have some corrals on the island that are clearly too close to the road or too close to the sidewalk. So, a lot of the arguments that were made in the end, why the ordinance as passed could not be maintained, I'm going to say that Emerald Isle seems to be doing what I think our intent was, and that we passed. And so, you do have a beach town that has the structure that we were hoping to do, that addressed our problems. And as Mike said, we were going to have a break-in period. You know, we actually wrote the ordinance that we were not going, that had a date for fines to start that was significantly after we passed it, figuring that a time of adjustment and education would be appropriate. I was hoping today that we would get some public comment, because there certainly was quite a bit when we had to roll back, no pun intended, the ordinance that we had passed, that we thought was going to address all of the problems. I would actually like us to have this discussion, but what I would also like is to give another month for our public, people listening, to be able to come back to us if they have comments that they want to make about, you know, their reservations, that we can then evaluate. Because I really don't want us to pass something again, and then a month or two from now undo it. But I fully agree with Mike that having hundreds of cans is not a good thing. And I also agree with him that we did make the decision that for larger houses, we could do a substitution for one of the wet trash bins for recycle. I also, I agree, I think it was a mistake. I think that we need to go back to designating simply one black bin per two bedrooms for rental properties. And if people want to have recycle, it's an additional cost. I see a lot of recycle bins that clearly have the wrong stuff in them. And it's a difficulty as well. People come, and they're going to recycle the way they recycle at home. And I can speak to this, because when I go to my townhouse in Wig Forest, we have six different plastics that we're allowed to recycle. Here, we have two. And so, these kinds of, it's not the easiest thing in the world to manage. I don't think that a renter comes to a property and immediately reads the recycling rules, and they are so different in various places. But if a rental property wants to have a recycle bin, that's fine. But I don't think it should be one of their core bins.
Ladies and gentlemen.
My personal opinion, number one, I do agree that seeing two hundred garbage cans on Ocean Boulevard on a Sunday afternoon, Saturday afternoon, whatever, it doesn't look very well for the beach. If we're going to make a change, I would rather MicroPat, whoever sponsored this one, to bring the exact change that they would like us to vote on to the next meeting. And let's discuss it, but not vote on it, and give thirty days after that for the public to weigh in on what the potential change is going to be, and then we vote the next meeting. So, you bring the exact change you want in February. We discuss it. We publicize it. Wait and hear what the comments are, and then we make a decision in March.
I'm fine with that. But if you look at the packet, I would say that the language is the same language that was originally voted in as an ordinance. It's in the packet.
When it was, the one that's adopted, the eighteenth day of December, two thousand and eighteen. Yeah. So, I mean, we can certainly do that and make it clear at the next meeting that this is the ordinance, because it, and I will go through it again to make sure that there was nothing in it. Well, because the, I have to look, we might have the recycled bin in there. But it is just, if you want to sort of start thinking about it ahead of time, it is the, it's basically the ordinance that was adopted the eighteenth day of December.
So, let me ask you a question. I get too deep into the processes. If I understood Mike, today, in the off-season, we give, we can put it out on Sunday for a Tuesday pickup.
We do forty-eight hours.
It's forty-eight hours in the off-season. You can put it out forty-eight hours before pickup.
Okay. In the summertime, if you're a weekend warrior, which I spent twenty-five years doing, you leave on Sunday, you got to find somebody to roll it out to the street for you on Monday, if it's for a Tuesday pickup?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that's the challenge. I mean, I...
I, again, I, if people want, I am happy to contact the town manager, administrator, whatever, at Emerald Isle, and ask them, you know, how they found their people adjusting. But again, you know, it's a similar, it's a similar community to Holden Beach, and because I have a friend who has a rental property there. I know people who live there. And, you know, they, and they're rental management companies. A lot of them take care of the rollout for people, too. So, again, there are ways.
I would like some, I know, other than paying, I know you could probably pay a service or somebody to do that, but I know so many people that come down in the summer that don't rent their houses, that leave on a Saturday or Sunday. And they're not here to roll them out on Monday night, or Monday. So, I, that's...
Where there's a demand, there's usually a company that becomes willing to do it.
So, you would privatize that?
Yeah.
Challenge. I mean, that would, that'd be their only option.
No, it's not the only option, because the...
Or a neighbor, or...
Yes, I mean, there are, and, and the thing about it, I get it. I, I, I get it that it's not going to work for everybody, but the idea is, as a community, we do things that's better for the entire community that may not be better for the individual. And, and the people who, there, there were a lot of, there was a lot of give and take and, and, and input from the community. But a lot of the problems were, were the people who say, you know, I only come down five, I don't rent my house, I come down five times a year and I shouldn't, and, and I say, well, five times a year can't be that big a deal. Whether you have a neighbor do it or you have to pay a kid to do it. So is that person having to pay a few bucks, it's a pain in the neck, no, no doubt about it, but is that for the betterment of the community, for everybody in, in the town? And like I say, it's the value or the property manager. You know, I mean, people are making a ton of money, whether you're an owner or a renter or whatever, making a lot of money and we should do whatever we can to keep this town as attractive as possible. And though it may be a problem, and I would say a minor problem for, for people or an inconvenience, it's something that we have to consider because it just, it just doesn't look right.
I got a question for you, Tim. What's the town's policy on corrals being built? Can you, I mean, like in, they're in the setbacks, they're in the five-foot setbacks, they're in, I wouldn't be surprised if some of them are in the right of way.
They are.
I mean.
Most of them are built, right, most of them are built, unless they're on a side street or a corner lot, most of them are built probably in the right of way.
In the setback, probably.
Yeah, and some of them may be in the setbacks. We, I've not, I'm not seeing a, a whole lot of those corrals, you know, being, being built for the last few years, they're, they're going to roll them back to the house.
And I think it was when Waste Industries also said that they were no longer going to automatically take the bin, if they saw a corral, they are not going to go get bins out of it. And that, that, that was like three years ago that they changed, that, that they made it public that we're not going to do that anymore. So I think fewer people were putting them in because if Waste Industries isn't going to take the bin out of it, they still have to get the bin to the street.
All right. Do we need a motion?
No, I think we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back, we'll bring an actual proposed ordinance to the next meeting and.
And we're going to give 30 days?
And, and I would, I would simply say that at this point in time, I'm going to ask people who are listening that the next packet that they get, take a good hard look and you can start commenting, you know, give us public comments next meeting and then we can give them another, another cycle. But, and, and look at what the Emerald Isle information is, is just an example of what's on their webpage.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Item 17, update on parking committee meeting of January 8th. Commissioner Kyle.
Yep. We did have the first meeting of the parking committee on January 8th. We, Commissioner Sullivan had asked that I give an update on our meeting at this meeting, so I'm doing that at his request. You have a document in your package that, that basically summarizes what we did at the meeting, but at the meeting was Commissioner Murdock and I, Town Manager David Hewitt, Assistant Town Manager Kristy Ferguson, Town Clerk Heather Fennel, Planning Director Tim Evans, Rhonda Wooton from Planning and Inspections, Lieutenant Frank Dilworth from Police Department and Scott Cunningham from Public Works Department. Our basic agenda was to review the initiative approved by the Board of Commissioners, also to go back and look at previous information that was put together by the 2019 Citizens' Advisory Committee, talk about any work efforts coming out of the committee and timelines and determine our next meeting date. So at the bottom of the page in your booklet is the, the meeting summary. We did discuss and everybody was in agreement on what the initiative was about. Planning Director Evans gave a high-level review of the work that was completed in 2019 by the parking committee. Commissioner Murdock and several people weighed in, just basically saying, let's, let's don't try to swallow the whole elephant, let's, you know, pick pieces that we can make happen sooner than later and prioritize those. Out of all that, we came up with four tasks that the group discussed. Town manager and staff agreed they could get accomplished. The first one was developing the cost of work estimates and estimating the number of potential parking spots that would result from building a knee-high bulkhead across the town-owned properties in the 800 block of Ocean Boulevard West to create new parking. The second one was to develop cost of work estimates and estimate the number of potential parking spots utilizing the two crossed, excuse me, the two crossed streets, crossed through streets between Ocean Boulevard and Brunswick Avenue West. The third one was to develop the cost of work estimates and estimate the number of potential parking spots by creating angled parking spots on Avenue A. And the last one was investigate the potential of using the space previously known as Hillside Drive, where Ocean Boulevard East ends and McCray Street begins on the ocean side for potential parking spots. If the use of the space is feasible, develop the cost and work estimates and estimate the number of potential parking spots. So these were the four tasks that the group agreed to. Staff said they could get it done in a couple of weeks. We said, you know, every time we say a couple of weeks, something comes up. So our next meeting, we agreed, our next, our meetings will be the first Friday of every month. So our next meeting will be about February 5th, give or take. And at that time, the staff will come back with their thoughts and input on these four tasks that we agreed to. So that's what we accomplished in the parking committee. Commissioner Murdock, any comments?
I don't have anything to add to that Woody, other than the fact that, you know, as always appreciate as much input as possible from the general public. It's a huge subject and it's very important, so we want your opinions as usual.
No. Just thank you for the update.
All right.
All righty. Town managers report.
Yes, sir. I'm going to start out with the end of second quarter budget to actual update and those slides are in your packet in blue, pretty much page, beginning at page 54, 55. Some of the highlights I'm going to be going over are the status of our operational funds, the general fund, the water and sewer fund, the B Part Fund and Canal Dredging. The water and sewer fund, along with the B Part Fund, appear to be in the red, but they really aren't. The, like the revenues that are like tax collections, we are on course with those. Those are the ad valorem sewer capital and canal dredging fees. Major North Carolina distributed revenues are up. Sales and use tax collections are about 65% with the, 65% with utilities, franchise tax collections or receipts at 50%. Building inspections continues to be strong. They're at 65% of budgeted revenues. And what we're seeing is a continued manifestation of what I lightly refer to as the COVID refugee syndrome. All of those revenues that are directly tied to occupancy tax, our water and sewer use charges are at 65%. And even with our budget amendment that we adopted last month, our occupancy taxes are at 102%. And I take note there, that is at least $100,000 greater than any year, complete physical year before. Next slide. As exam, as example, our actual plus our encumbrances line, you have your buy fund down the left side, far left column on this spreadsheet. And our net actual plus encumbrances line is in the column titled actual plus encumbrance. That is a revenue less expenses plus any encumbrances that we may have had. So we're, we're about a million dollars ahead in the general fund. Water and sewer in the red, about 653,000, as is B Part for $901,000. Canal dredging remains strong at 235,000. I said that the water and sewer and the B Part Fund were in the red. They're really not because those funds have inter-fund transfers and also fund balances that have been appropriated. The list station upgrade is a million and a half dollars. We've paid that on the front, but these numbers, we only make fund balance, the use of fund balance recordations on the revenue side at the end of the year. So we are ahead if you take those into consideration. And again, there's no inter-fund transfers. We paid a million and a half dollars of debt service on our special obligation bond in the B Part Fund. That does not reflect the inter-fund transfer offset from our capital reserve fund in the beach capital reserve fund. So we're good. As always, the monthly budget to actual is posted on the town's website at, it's under the administration section at hvtownhall.com. See any questions on that? Moving right along, I'd like to remind the board that the, it's almost February and we'll be moving into budget season pretty soon. Just to give you a heads up, I'd like to possibly put it on the agenda for the, the February board meeting to see if there's any discussion. You guys need to look at your calendar, see if there's any carve-outs, dates that you don't want to do, and to set up the budget calendar for the, the upcoming budget year. Moving right along, the League of Municipalities Legislative Agenda. This is an item that we've been, become involved now, some significant involvement over the course of the last two years, over the last two months, the, the town has been involved in setting or engaging with the league in order to develop goals for the upcoming General Assembly's legislative session that's, will open up or go in session here soon. The result is that there are 17 draft municipal goals that are being considered by the membership. We were given the option of voting on 10 of those goals. They are included as attachments in your package. One in particular, and it also identifies in those attachments, the 10 that are the town's goals that we voted on. One in particular, I want to bring to your attention on page two of three, about halfway down, is titled, "Create a Permanent and Adequate Funding String for Local Infrastructure Needs." We were able to get language included in this goal that specifically articulates beaches and parks in this goal. Never before has that occurred in a league agenda. Still got to get 10 that are accepted by the membership, but I believe that this effort has, is gone, has great potential for paying off for us in the long run, at least getting beaches identified as an infrastructure. That's critical to being able to access the big dollars. Update on the Lockwood-Foley Inlet Dredging. After three weeks, the merit has been here for three weeks. I think the cost on that's about $18,000 a day. The progress that it's made is in the survey that's in your package there. And looks like after three weeks that we've got about half of a channel out to the inlet. Doesn't look like it gets across the bar with much more than four feet depth there. That's all that they're scheduled to be dredging here. Also, they're Winchester'd as far as the funds that they have in hand. Sand fence project installation, that's well underway. There's been approximately 4,000 feet of beachfront sand fence installed as, as of yesterday. They're moving from west to east. They were at about blockade runner and will continue heading east through the next few days. Regarding the federal work plan, last week, Kristy and I held a what's next call with Warden Smith regarding the federal coastal storm damage study. As you may know, Holden, or I'm, I'm sure you do, Holden Beach is competing for one of the new study starts as part of the Corps' 2021 Work Plan authorization, authorized by the recently approved Energy and Water Development Appropriations Bill. Wilmington District has affirmed that Holden Beach is at the top of their priority list. Staff is working with Warden Smith to make, make sure that we're in contact with the Office of Management and Budget and the Corps to make, to ensure that the continuity of our position is maintained through the changes in the federal administration. So in asking, well, well, what happens next, Warden Smith has reiterated that if included in the work plan, the town would need to sign an agreement with the Corps committing the town to participate in a study effort at a cost of one and a half million dollars over the course of three years, 500,000 of which would need to be included in the upcoming FY 21, 22 budget. Just to, as exemplomatic of how fast this information is breaking right before this meeting and shortly, if not five minutes after I hit print on this update, I've got a call from Bob Kiesler, who's the program manager at the Corps. And just coming out of the Corps' work plan, the, not just the Wilmington District, but the National Corps Wilmington Work Plan, Holden Beach has been selected for initialization of a general revaluation report. It is number four. I don't know if these are in order of priority, but it is on a number four on the Corps' work list and it's number one out of North Carolina. I'll have more information specifically on that and we'll provide that to commissioners just as soon as I get it. The streets petition status on Seagull, we've got affirmative responses to date, including the last one that Heather gave me right before the meeting. We have reached a majority of tipping point on that with 23 out of 44. However, we've got to make sure that there's a, some of those, a half dozen or so, that we've got to get the Y for a co-owner to sign those. But the, the majority for Seagull has been, the majority number for Seagull petition has been reached. Deal and Canal, I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and deem those non-responsive. We just haven't had much from them. Heather's continuing to work on the. Heather's continuing to work on the certifications. And, um, I would, in one last, uh, reach out for the Deal and Canal, uh, property owners. The, the street maintenance efforts for those are not gonna be cost-effective in the future without paving them. And, uh, we'll go ahead and, and stipulate that it's really an unrealistic service level expectation to think that, uh, houses can be along, you know, an inhabited road and, and to keep it in any type of, of a serviceable, um, mode. Uh, status on the sewer lift station number three, uh, construction, that's been in service for over a month. That's the eight-hundred block, uh, lift station. It's been in service for over a month. Our final inspection has been performed. There are some minor details, uh, wrap-up kinda things, uh, and we are waiting as built before a final CO and the payment of the final invoice can be done. But we're, we're, we're feeling pretty good about, uh, the status of that project and its wrap-up. Update on the, uh, system development fee study. Uh, the draft review and discussion was held between staff and Raff Teles last week. And we are on a glide slope now to bring it to the board at the February meeting. I'd previously told the board I'd hope to have that here for you tonight, but, you know, Christmas got in the way. That's just, that's just the way that went out. Canal subdivision dredging, the Scotch Bonnet site continues to, um, improve, uh, there. We're seeing continued shrinkage of the material in that, uh, in that site. And it was actually dry enough for us to plant it and grow ryegrass here. So it's, it's getting to be a nice green carpet. It's about halfway grown in. So our, our, um, approach to that is we're, we're, we're gonna keep nipping at that until we get it, uh, get it back to where it needs to be. Uh, FEMA status, we are currently in the public notification phase for our Dorian, uh, project. Uh, that's required before Dorian can have a project worksheet, uh, issued on it once. And if that PW is approved, it might can be included with the Florence Michael project. Uh, what are the odds for a three-storm beach project? I don't know, but it's, uh, previously, we had thought there would be a Florence Michael project and an, uh, a Dorian Isaias, uh, project. Uh, it's looking like there, there, we might have a three-storm project, uh, could be. I mean, I think that we're gonna follow up with that, um, uh, related matter with the consultation with the attorney in closed session. Uh, on a, on a brighter side, on our Parks and Rec programs, you know, it's just been my anecdotal observation that it just seems like that during this time of, of COVID, more people are seeking out outside activities. Every time I, I look outside at our Bridgeview Park here, that place is just, just bustling. At night, you know, with these short days, I leave here, it's dark. Um, you know, there'll be, unless it's really cold, you know, which is fifty degrees in North Carolina, um, there'll be, uh, the, the court has people on it playing till nine. I think our lights are on till ten o'clock at night out there. But, you know, it's, it's lit at night and, and has a lot of activity. Some of that could be because kids are home, uh, with, in homeschooling and online classes. But it just seems like we have a lot of, of activities. Our transit dock revenues are ahead of last year's. Uh, and likewise, our yoga program has a hundred more participant, participants as of December, uh, this time last year. We're going ahead and proceeding with our concert schedules. We weren't able to have them last year. But in anticipation and hopes that the shows can go on, we've gone ahead and booked those all the way through the summer. And that's all I have, unless anybody has questions.
David, what is our, our typical, um, servicing of, uh, the mud roads? And, and what's the town's obligation for them?
On those town, on those roads that are town-maintained streets, uh, normally we, uh, respond, it's on a complaint basis. And those streets that are mud roads are, I wanna say mud, they're
They're mud.
Not paved yet, are, uh, Deal and, uh,
Seagull.
Deal, Canal. Now, Canal probably has more cocaine on it, uh, than most. And then on the east, the McCray Street Extension, um, that's got a whole bunch of cocaine on it. It's probably been placed down there just as a matter of over years and years and years, uh, it being used as a, a parking lot. Every time it rains.
I got one question for you, David. If those are affirmed on Seagull Street, um, that's correct?
Yes.
I've been asked the timeframe to proceed with doing the work and the procedure. And the, and another thing I wanna point out is some of the residents that have approached me that agreed to, to go ahead with that are asking questions that I can't answer about how we're gonna deal with the stormwater runoff and the, the things that, uh, would come with paving the road. Is it gonna cause, I mean, they have concerns, even though they were, they were kinda hesitant, some of them, to go along with it. So I would, they're asking for, some of them are asking for information or, or just to be kept abreast of what, what the actual procedure is and that the water that would obviously run off of a paved surface would not go on to their property. So I'm just, that's kinda more of a statement. And then the question is the, how fast that would actually come to pass? Would it be before summer?
No. It, it's, it's not gonna be before summer. The process, uh, in and of itself, there's about three public engagements. Um, there has to be, the board has to, uh, once Heather certifies the list, we've got to advertise it. Uh, but I, I, I wanna say that there's three public engagements. Uh, the actual plan, uh, the, the proposed assessment has to be okay. There's a role that the board has to adopt. Um, so I, I do not anticipate that done before, uh, being done before Memorial Day. I do not.
Okay.
But we have, that, we have actually published and briefed to the board, uh, previously, uh, what that process is. Now, we haven't laid down, uh, exactly what the timeframe is, uh, for each one of those. But there's about three windows that the board, um, has to take action on before it can be, before an assessment can be made. But what I was hoping was that we could possibly, um, be able to dovetail that in and maybe take advantage of the economies of scale with the paving of Brunswick Avenue. That's not, we're not gonna be able to get, get the, get the administrative side of the house done in order to, to bring off that as one big project. We're gonna have to end up, you know, having two separate projects.
Yeah, that, that street in particular is just in terrible, terrible shape.
Yeah.
And then that's, I mean, they're, they're kinda anxious.
It, it's, it's pretty straightforward now that we've got, well, once we get the certifications done, um, and what that process is, uh, we can actually, um, um, kinda do a public service announcement. We have slides made up and we, we can post those up and direct people to that with an email blast. That, I think that would help them along. But, uh, to your, uh, point about stormwater, uh, whenever, you know, we were doing the, the telephone calls, the, the concern over stormwater, uh, was a common theme, uh, in, in the, uh, talking to people about that project. And, you know, suffice it to say, um, any design for paving and what goes to contract is not only gonna have to have an engineered solution for stormwater, it's, um, it's gonna have to work.
Can the mayor's comment?
We just, uh, first and foremost, we hope for a very peaceful, peaceful power tomorrow. Uh, we hope all goes well for that. I'd like for each and everyone to remember Allen because he's really having a hard time with his breathing and everything. And, and he, he's holding up well, but he, he, he's still gonna take some time. Keep it, keep him in your prayers, if you would. And, uh, let's remain safe. Keep the mask on, keep the di- social distance going. And just be thankful we live where we live.
Next commissioner.
I'd also encourage everybody to stay safe. I also like to thank all the town staff. We've got a lot of work to do and we're pushing through it as best we can. And I'm gonna say this, and, uh, I, I'm not getting a lot of comments from the public, um, concerning items that I think the public should be commenting on. And my decision anyway of sitting up here is to do the will of the community. And you've got things like parking and you have things like this trash that we're facing and, and just a myriad of different paving streets and all of that stuff. And, and we get the pushback. I mean, there's fees that are coming that are gonna be considered, um, I guess at the next meeting and things like that. We, we need, I know you guys can't be here, but you can get to a computer and you can send emails and you can a- at least voice your opinion. And I promise you, whether I respond or, or any commissioner responds to you or not, we, we see that and we read it and we appreciate it. So I would encourage everybody that has any concerns whatsoever to voice their opinion. It's the only way we're gonna know. And I don't wanna be held accountable for not doing what it is that the community wants. So that's, at least from me, that's, that's why I'm sitting up here. You guys put me up here and I wanna hear from you. So other than that, stay safe and, uh, keep Allen in your prayers, 'cause, um, we miss him up here.
Yes.
I think it's Woody. No, okay. Um, thanks for listening in and I echo what, what Brian says. Um, please send comments. Um, if you send them to Heather, um, it becomes part of the public record that's easily followed. When you just send them to the group of commissioners, they can kinda get lost in the overall public comments sort of, you know, record keeping. So, uh, anything that we are discussing, that we're working on, um, if you have something that you want to express, uh, send it to Heather before the next meeting. Um, it'll be on the agenda that we can, you know, we can discuss your comments and try to implement what the townspeople really want to see. So thanks a lot.
Uh, I wanna echo what Brian said, you know, to the public. We, we need your feedback, we need your input. Uh, I hear occasionally from folks when they got something to complain about. Um, but I also like to hear just feedback on how things are going. Uh, we need input on trash, we need input on parking. Um, fortunately, there's a lot of good things going on and I wanna thank the staff for your efforts on, on everything that you're doing. Uh, it's, it's been a calm year so far, but it's only January nineteenth. Uh, and I do wanna wish everybody a happy new year. And lastly, I wanna echo what Gerald and Brian said. And, yeah, we all need to keep, uh, Allen in our prayers. Uh, he is struggling, having a hard time and we wanna make sure he pulls through so he can continue to chair these meetings. Thank you.
Of, of course, I would also wish Allen the best and hope he has a, a quick and full recovery. And I think that, uh, I would, I would hope that we all take as the precautions that are necessary. Uh, hopefully, we're getting some light at the end of the tunnel and people will be vaccinated and, and some of this worry will, will cease in, in the not-too-distant future. So please, tr- tr- take care of yourself and be, be kind to, to one another and considerate of one another as, as to limit the spread of, of this terrible sickness as, as much as we can. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, of course, the, the town staff and, and the workers. But I also like to thank the people who were on the, uh, committee for the land use plan. It was a long, arduous, uh, endeavor and, uh, takes a lot of time. And, uh, a town like this benefits greatly by the input from the people who live here and the people have some expertise. So I, I'd like to thank everybody who's on any type of, uh, committee, anybody that volunteers their time to help the town in any way. And, uh, again, happy new year to everyone and, and be safe.
Do I have a motion? We go into executive session?
Can I read the reason? Do you mind if I read the reason for it when you took the call? Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three three one eight eleven eight three to consult with the town attorney?
Do we need a motion or? I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to Stat- North Carolina General Statute to consult with the town attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Executive session.